All right. Good evening, Jared. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great. Well, it's six o'clock and welcome to the Division of Marine Fisheries public hearing on this Zoom format. My name is Dan McCarron. I'm the director at the Division of Marine Fisheries, and we're here tonight to talk about three particular items. First, we'll go through a little bit of housekeeping. Mention that this hearing is being held under the authority of Chapter 30A of Mass. General laws as well as Chapter 130, Sections 2, 17A, and 104. We are taking public comment at this particular hearing for proposed amendments to Chapter 6 of the 322 CMR regulations affecting recreational fisheries. We're accepting public comment through this Friday, March 5. And there on the screen is an address you can send your comments to, and we'll be accepting those through Friday.
And Dan, it is our preference that you send comments electronically via email rather than by post given delays in the mail and our remote working status.
Good point, Jared, and I think we're going to capture that on the next slide as well under the kind of the rules of the game. So the purpose of the hearing, of course, is to allow you, the public, an opportunity to submit data, opinions, comments, arguments on any amendments being proposed or offer how the proposed amendments can be changed to minimize the impact of these rules on you while still achieving the goals. All members of the public will be muted through this presentation, but at the conclusion of the presentation, DMF will first accept clarifying questions regarding the proposals, and then, once all the questions are addressed, we will invite public comments on the proposals. And Jared, I'm assuming we'll do that one at a time. We will take clarifying questions and then complete the item and go on to the second and third items.
I think that would be best for session, yes.
Yeah, another thing to note is that even though this software has chat functions, we're going to disable the chat function, but you'll be able to respond verbally at the end of the hearing, and you can follow up with staff at the end of the hearing by email at the marine.fish@mass.gov website. We're participating in the question in comment forums. We're going to require you to use the raise hand function. This creates a queue, and staff will recognize you and unmute you so that you can take turns to speak. We're going to, it says here, we're going to provide two minutes for questions and comments, but I don't think there's that many participants tonight. I'm sure we could be a little bit more liberal in terms of the time limits. It's not necessary tonight for you to provide verbal comment during this hearing. You can use this opportunity to learn about the proposals and then submit written comments later, and we prefer that, actually. It gives some of our commission members a chance who didn't get a chance to attend tonight's session to hear your own voice in an email that you might be sending, so to speak. As Jared mentioned, we really do prefer written comments. If you can send them by email, that would be great. We will be forwarding all the comments on to our commission, and our commission is going to deliberate on this at the March 18 business meeting. The commission is a nine-member board appointed by the governor that oversees all of our regulations pertaining to fishing, especially the times, places, areas, those kind of rules. This hearing will be recorded, and questions and comments are all part of the public record, and there will be a recording of the hearing on DMF's YouTube channel posted probably by tomorrow. So there are three items tonight. The first is adopting recreational fishing limits for Gulf of Maine haddock and cod consistent with federal rules that are in the process of being changed. The second one is we're adjusting the state's circle hook regulations for recreational fishermen fishing for strike bass with natural baits. And the third is prohibiting the use of traps to catch blue crabs. The first item Jared Silver is going to take for us tonight. He's going to present the information and take it from here, Jared.
All right. Good evening, folks. So the first item we're going to present on is recreational Gulf of Maine haddock limits. These limits are being proposed, insistent with an interim federal action that goes into effect April 2021 and recent action taken by the New England Fishery Management Council to maintain these measures for the upcoming federal fishing year, which is May 1 through 2021 through April 30, 2022. So what we're looking at is a slight modification to the recreational Gulf of Maine haddock season by adding a additional open season of April 1 to April 14. So the open season would then run from April 1 to February 28 through 29, depending on the year, and rather than April 15 through the end of February. I believe we'll probably take comments and questions on this now. That's the extent of this proposal. If anyone in the, among the attendees, among the public has any questions regarding this proposal, please use the raise hand function, and I will recognize you. I'm not seeing any questions. If you have any comments, please use the raise hand function, and I'll recognize you. Rob Savino, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I like that we're adding two weeks on to this regulation. Opening it up for haddock is definitely a good thing. One quick thing on a housekeeping note is I also like to see the participants in the meeting, and I know that we can't see them on the meeting, but it'd be nice to be able to see them in the future. But you do have my support on this measure. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Patrick Pickett, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank the division for providing this opportunity for comment. Gulf of Maine haddock is underutilized. We're not getting anywhere close to the quota, I mean, to the sub ACL, and I support this personally. And as the government affairs officer for Mass. Strike Bass Association will also be, in our comment letter, will have support for this particular proposal.
Thank you, Patrick. Paul Diggins, you may unmute yourself. You're recognized.
Yes, hi. I support the new proposal with the extra two weeks in April for the haddock fishing. Thank you.
Jeff Visser, you may unmute yourself. You're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to say I also support the additional two weeks of fishing. I think it would stay consistent with other fisheries that open up on April 1. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, I'm going to proceed to the next, because I'm not seeing any further comments on this. I'm going to proceed to the next item, which is recreational Gulf of Maine cod limits. Similar to the haddock limits, we're moving to make our rules consistent with federal rules. Again, this would apply for April 2021 and remain in effect through April 2022. The first action is to adopt in April 1 through April 14, and September 15 through September 30 season for Gulf of Maine cod with a one-fish bag limit and a 21-inch minimum size. This implements the interim action that the federal, that the NOAA Fisheries approved for this coming April. Additionally, there is a proposal here to have a four-hire bonus season of September 8 through October 7. That proposal was approved by the New England Fisheries Management Council, but we are uncertain if NOAA Fisheries will approve the additional four-hire bonus season. Our intention is to adopt it. If adopted by NOAA Fisheries, otherwise, the four-hire fishing year or season would be the same as those for the private angler mode, which would be April 1 through April 14, and September 15 to September 30. Are there any comments, any questions, rather, on this proposal? Please use the raise hand function if there are. I'm not seeing any questions. We'll proceed to comments. There's any comments, please use the raise hand function, and I will recognize you. Paul Diggins, you may unmute yourself. You're recognized.
Yes, under the proposal, the second one, second option for higher, April 1 through the 14th, and then again, September 8 through October 7. I do support that.
Jared Freedon, you're recognized. You may unmute yourself.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I too support the four-hire proposal of April 1 to April 14, and September 8 to October 7. I think it allows us to be able to take cod that might be, that may not otherwise be able to be taken and then returned to be more, to have higher mortality rates. I think it's a great move. Thank you.
Rob Savino, you're recognized. You may unmute yourself.
Okay, I too agree with the proposal of April 1 to April 14, and September 8 to October 7. I will say, though, that it would be nice if maybe Mass. could be on the forefront and push the Fed a little bit by changing the date a little bit more and bring it in more towards May. And I'll tell you why I say this, because typically up here in our area, the April 1 to April 14 fishing timeframe will give you very limited fishing. So I'm not sure it's achieving what we're hoping to achieve by allowing the fishery. Where the opening the fishery in a later timeframe, but still keep it in the springtime like May or something like that, would definitely benefit the fishery even more. But as you have it here, I like it and I agree with it, but I'd like to see it really shift more towards the beginning of May, May 1 through May 14 even.
Thank you for the comment, Rob. We appreciate that. Dan, hold on. Patrick Pickett, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I would, I'd like to voice support for the proposal, the way that you described it, Jared, that the state would be mirroring whatever the federal rule is. There's a real nuanced number here that year to year, as a member of the AP, just speaking for myself personally, as a citizen of the Commonwealth. I mean, a one-fish cod season is a bit of a joke to me. I mean, a one-fish bag limit continues to me to call that a fishery. But we've litigated that already, and we've gone down this road. So I don't want to relitigate that, but I just have to comment on it that a one-fish bag just is almost like not calling it a cod fishery. Almost to me, lets the managers responsible for rebuilding off the hook a little bit. But that being said, I support mirroring the federal rule. And I wish this proposal for the bonus season included the entire fishery and not just the four-hire fishery. I realize and understand that how that came about. I don't, personally, I don't support split measures. However, I would never, at this time, deny, because that one fish does make a difference for cod trips. I actually think it makes a difference for all angler trips. The ability to keep one caught is important to people. As small as it may be, it does affect trips. I think we've, the data, I think, showed that the trips went up during those seasons. So I support the proposal, although, and I just want to make that comment that I don't believe we should be looking at split measures. I believe that this should be for the entire fishery.
Michael Carroll, you're recognized.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment, I support, you know, both proposals, both the haddock and the cod. I just want to make a comment, I think, based on Rob's comment with the cod. I think there's an opportunity to look at the fishery and when we execute the fishery based upon the economic drivers, which essentially, you know, what Rob is saying is if you open it from the 1st to the 15th, you know, it's going to be really difficult for us to get out there because of weather in that time of year. If you push those dates in towards May, those dates will allow us to get more trips in, and will essentially increase the economic benefit to the fishery. So I just want to make that comment that there's, you know, not just a preference, but there's an economic justification for looking at that, and I'd recommend that the state and the feds take a look at that.
Thank you, Michael. Patrick McDonald, you're recognized.
I'm also inclined to agree with both Rob and everybody else that April is just, it's not a great time for us to get customers out there for higher. And I'm more in favor of a later, maybe, May for a gap to try to get people out there and fish in better weather, at least.
Appreciate the comment, Patrick. Dan, I'm not seeing any further comments on this. We're going to proceed to the next item.
Great. Okay, thanks, Jared. The next one is the strike bass and circle hooks proposal. And this one is a little bit complicated based on some ongoing deliberations at the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission. But let me introduce what's going on. DMF from Massachusetts adopted the initial circle hook requirement back in 2019 for this past year 2020, and it was a requirement that all recreational anglers using natural baits use circle hooks, with some exceptions, and we're going to show those in a minute. ASMFC, under Addendum 6, a lot of the states got together, and they adopted the coastwide measure, but they kind of wiped out some of our exemptions. And so that's kind of what this is about. It's about us coming to compliance with the East Coast standards, but at the same time, trying to iron out some of these weird exemptions, and I'll get into this in a second. So the existing, or the rule when it was enacted made no exceptions, and that was back in October. And Massachusetts and Maine voted to try to get some exemptions for at least the tube and worm rigs, and we weren't successful in doing that. And so after the meeting in October, you know, come November and then December, we started to talk to some of the organized fishing groups, and they were not happy with that, and they just thought it was not the best decision because they argued pretty effectively that the circle hook in a piece of chunk bait or whole fish is used best when the bait is sort of left to drift or left on the seabed as opposed to something that's towed or trolled, like a tube and worm. And they argued that the incident, the incidents of foul hooking a strike bass with a tube and worm were almost nonexistent. And I think that a lot of the other organized boards' groups made similar arguments to some of their state delegations. And so a formal letter was written to the ASMFC to reconsider this, and at the February meeting, that's essentially what happened, is that Maine and Massachusetts put together a two-state proposal to address these issues, and we got kind of a two-year exemption for tube and worm specifically. And other states also are going to have that exemption. But Maine and Massachusetts are going to do some work. We're going to do some experimental fishing and try to describe the incidence of foul hooking, the location of hooking, things like that. So there's some science behind this, even though everybody is very confident. We could always use some good data on this. So there's also an ongoing committee at ASMFC to try to define what is bait or natural bait. And what's interesting about ASMFC is often votes are taken, and then states go home, and they do their best to adopt what appears to be the specifics of the rule, but sometimes there's variation among jurisdictions on the actual legal language. And when we researched what was defined as bait in many other, and natural bait in many other states, it was all over the place. So that's being worked on. There's a working group trying to help make these rules more consistent among the jurisdictions. So that's the background. So the existing rule, which we have to amend to comply with the FMP, is to continue to allow, I'm sorry, continue to mandate circle hooks by recreational anglers fishing for strike bass. But we need to eliminate the exemption that we had on the books for anglers fishing on four-hire trips. That was an exemption that we created when we first adopted it. But that exemption has been voted down or rejected by the Atlantic States. And the other language we had here, which was anglers fishing with lures rigged with natural baits that are trolled, cast, and received a vertically jig. We have to wipe out that language, but we are going to reintroduce language that specifically exempts the tube and worm as a fishing rig for which you do not need a circle hook. And also, a question came up about pork rinds as to whether or not that is a bait that therefore would mandate a circle hook. In Massachusetts, DMF intends to specify in the regulation that pork rinds are not natural bait. In our view, it's simply part of a lure that makes the, even though it may be scented, the attraction is primarily visual by the bass when chasing a pork rind. And then the last bullet here, which is important one, is we are going to adopt language, which basically says that if you're using non-conforming tackle and you do catch a strike bass, you got to release it. And that's, it's sort of like the honor system. It reminds me of the prohibition on snagging salmon in Alaska. You know, it's not legal to take a salmon that's been snagged. It's, you know, is it worth the chances of being caught? They're probably not that great, but it is an honor system. And we do intend to enact that rule, saying that if you do catch a strike bass, you know, on using bait, like if you're fluke fishing or fishing for bluefish or whatever, using a non-circle hook, you got to release the fish. So I guess we can take some clarifying questions at this point because it is a little complicated, but it is a work in progress. I want to credit some of the organized fishing groups for stepping up and bringing this to our attention, and also writing a pretty effective letter that caught the attention of many of the state's delegations along the coast, and that when it finally went to a vote at ASMFC, I think the outreach that some of the organized fishing groups did was very effective. So Jared, why don't we take any clarifying questions? And Nicola Reserve is on the call tonight from our staff, and she's knowledgeable about this as well, and she can help me. I don't know.
We'll use the same process as we did prior, which is if you have a question right now, use the raise hand function, and I'll recognize you. And if we have no questions, or once we're done with questions, we'll proceed to comments. Dan, I'm not seeing any questions on the subject matter, so let's proceed to comments.
Cool.
You have a comment, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Rob Savino, you're recognized. Rob, you got to unmute yourself.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about this. I was late to the question part of it. Right now, we are still talking about just changes to what we discussed in the last March Zoom meeting or whatever we finalized there, right? There has been no changes to strike bass regulations since then, but we're just changing it to this right here, correct?
That's right.
Okay, okay. I'll make my comments after I hear from everybody else. Thank you very much.
Jared Freedon.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to DMF for supporting the efforts to be able to bring back the tube and worm. I think it's an incredibly important part of our fishery and a very safe way of catching and releasing strippers. So I really wanted to say thank you very much for the efforts and the collaboration.
And I assume you support the proposal.
Absolutely.
Dan, I'm not seeing any other comments. Okay, we got, now we have a few. Patrick, you're recognized.
Thank you. So first, I want to just acknowledge and thank DMF having watched the first ASMFC discussion a few months ago, and then the following, to be like the leading state or one of the two leading states pushing this issue. We really appreciate it. There is beyond it affecting like the money that many, 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 many thousands and probably, were probably hundreds of thousands of anglers in the Commonwealth that have some of this gear sitting inside their sheds and inside their tackle boxes and inside their boats and to like, to deem a lot of this gear just like, okay, you can't use it now. There's an economic impact, not to mention, I can think of four different manufacturers, including the leading tube lure manufacturer, sit in the Commonwealth. And that's real money to real businesses in today's world. So thank you for that. I did have one question as I, for my comments. The existing rule that says anglers fishing with lures rigged with natural baits that are trolled, cast, and received a vertically jig, is that going away? And is the proposal replacement language?
Jared?
Yeah.
Do you want to throw the language out, or do you just want to answer that question to Patrick?
If you give me a second, I can get the language up. I do have it out, so just give me a moment. You'll see over here in subsection 5 that that language is being removed from the rule. And that this new language here is being adopted.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. So I'm going to make a couple of comments here. And we, and these comments are made on my behalf only. I'm just speaking for myself, although mastripe bass will be submitting comments, written comments. And a lot of them are going to be a rewrite of our original comment letter when the state developed its original circle hook regulation. Because we pointed out about 15 conflicts that we saw at the time. And lo and behold, a couple of years later, a lot of other clubs finally jumped on board with us, which is nice to see. But that being said, so like getting to the spirit, I understand this is really hard to do, to keep the spirit of the rule, but to address all the different stuff that's going on. My one concern with the proposal is how clearly a live eel could be with a circle hook. They are fished extremely slow or drifted. But in either case, there, when you're fishing with a live eel, the intention is for the fish to take the eel and then the fish moves, as opposed to when you're fishing with an artificial, which generally you're moving the artificial. So there's far less, far less opportunity for the animal to swallow and to get gut hooked. And I think my understanding is that's what we're trying to avoid with the rules. So that being said, that the technique that falls in here is what we refer to as a rig deal, where people will take a dead eel or eel skin and rig it up sometimes over a plug, sometimes with inline wires and whatnot, and they move that fish exactly like a lure. That line anglers fish with lures rigged with natural baits that are trolled, cast and retrieved are vertically jigged, that encompasses the rig deal. And so the rig deal thing would have fallen under that exemption. With this change, I'm not 100% sure that the rig deal is still okay. And where it is something that's done pretty commonly by surf casters in Massachusetts. I just, I wanted to point that out, that change. And I don't know, I don't know what needs to be done there. I'll think a little bit more and try and add it into the mastripe bass comments. But I just wanted to point out that one thing, because I don't think our intention is to, is to take and take away. I don't think the state is intending to take away techniques that are actually when you're moving, moving a lure essentially. And specifically when the exact same rig done with rubber is clearly legal.
Yeah. So, so I think, I think we have an answer for you on that, Patrick. In our view, because the bait is not attached to the terminal tackle, it's, we think it'd be okay. And Nicola Meserve, if you're on, I think we've looked at these, how the eel skin rigs were done. And it's, it's just like a shroud over an artificial lure. So I'm guessing that it's, it would be allowed.
Yeah, I agree, Dan. And I'm hoping that this is something that the ASMFC's subcommittee will help to clarify in the coming month as well.
So Patrick, if you think that that's how this rule should go, you should make that comment.
Okay, thank you, we will.
Patrick, did you have any other comments?
No, that was it. I mean, I appreciate that this is a real difficult process that like, we're trying to fix it for the state immediately, but we're also then have to comply with the ASMFC. And I'm getting a little bit deeper involved in that particular process, just as I remember the AP. But it's, yeah, this is not easy and it's going to be, I, God bless the people that are working on this because it's just not easy.
Appreciate that, Patrick. Leah Barden, you're recognized.
Hi, everyone. Hope you can hear me. I'd just like to thank and back the DMF for all these proposals. I think they're great. I'd like to secondly back Patrick, who was just saying, well, regarding the economic impact of having these lures, they were passed down to me, some of these lure types. And I don't want them to just sit there. I want to use them. And more, you know, more of just like a comment about the circle hooks. With having the less of a need to actually set the hook or strike, in my opinion, it results in less of a mortality, less of a mortality rate. And it's easier for new anglers to, you know, to get that catch and then, and then release successfully. And another point I'd really like to make that I haven't seen brought up or discussed is it's easier for a disabled person. My son had a stroke and so taking him fishing is difficult with full right side hemiplasia. For him to use a different hook and have to set that hook is nearly impossible for him. So these hooks do a lot of that work for him, not that I wouldn't. But he does like to do that kind of stuff himself. So I'd also like to point out from just a surf caster, shore fisherman, with a person living with disabilities, it's, it does the work for them. And I really love these circle hooks. That's all, guys.
Thank you, Leah.
That's really interesting. Thanks for those comments.
You're welcome.
Rob, you said earlier you might have a comment. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I figured I'd call on you. You're, you're ready to go, Rob. You're recognized.
All right, Jared, thank you very much. I appreciate the shout out because I was, I was waiting. It's hard to see who's ready to go and who's not here. So, so like any other meeting, I like to see who's in the audience. I like to see who's attending. So if I can urge you guys to, to share that with us next time, that'd be greatly appreciated because my friends are here and, and I'm kind of doing two meetings on one side, just to see who's around and, and what have you. Anyway, I'll talk about the striped bass piece first and, and talk about the circle hook. Thank you very much, first off, for being the leading state with the Atlantic States Marine Fishery Council in pushing for not a mandatory use of the circle hook more than an educational aspect. And I appreciate that. And I think I got that correct. But, but there were two states that didn't like this proposal and, and I think we were one of them. That's, that's what I'm talking about. The second thing is, is I'm really happy about some organizations really jumping in and kind of defending the Atlantic States Marine, or defending our fisheries, defending our state, defending guys who have businesses here, guys who have been fishing with certain types of lures and certain types of rigs. I mean, this is really important. What might be something that's not important to Virginia may be really important to us. And this is one of them. So I'm glad that, that you jumped on board for that. And I'm glad there, there are other associations that teamed up. Now, now as far as the inline circle hooks, I will tell you, we don't have a lot of data. I'm waiting for the data. I'm waiting for the science to come out. And I've been asking this for a couple of years now, of more accurate stuff on the catch and release mortality of circle hooks and stuff. We don't have that. And, and how I know that is just listening and attending Atlantic States Marine Fishery Council meetings as well as state and so on and so forth. I am a big fan of circle hooks. I think circle hooks are really good. I think the average angler, meaning people who don't know what they're doing, people who haven't been fishing all their lives, things of that nature, recreational fishermen, father, sons, taking some guy out fishing for the first time. Circle hooks are awesome. Put a piece of bait on, put a circle hook out, sit by the wall, let the line go out, you're good. Okay, I am in agreement with that. Circle hooks do work great with chunk bait. There are some issues as far as I see with live bait. And people are talking about bridling and stuff like this. And I actually would have loved to have had some of the, the state folks on board this fall. And I'll take you out anytime you want. But I did a test on my own to see the catch versus miss ratio when you switch over to circle hooks. And I did it this fall. And I could promise you that, that the hookup ratio drops from an easily, I would say 10 to 15 to one, as soon as you start putting circle hooks on with live bait. And it comes to my point that I struggle with the fact that the charter boats are now lumped into having to follow the recreational category that the Atlantic States Marine Fishery Council has made. I would like the state to lead and say, hey, our charter fishing and for hire party and guide vessels, let's, let's talk to one-on-one and guide vessels, be represented as an industry on their own. So therefore I'm in agreement with everything that we have here. I'm not necessarily in agreement with circle hooks for experienced anglers and things like that. They know what works. They don't want to hurt the fish. And I would say that that's where I am with that. Nice work on, on leading it. But I think we've got to push back on Atlantic States Marine Fishery Council on some of these really hard things that are coming our way as businesses. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob. Mike Delzino?
Yeah, I would just like to agree with Rob and say that we pushed hard for the charter boats to keep the exemption that it wasn't a mandatory circle hook with all bait. And like Rob said, certain situations, they just don't work. So I would just like to go on the record and say that I disagree with the broad implementation of circle hooks for everybody. And I agree that the charter boat should be kept in their own category. And also I have a question, how many circle hooks can I put in a bait?
I don't think we have any limits. Nicola, are you aware of any rules with limits on number of hooks within a bait?
I'm not.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be wanting to undermine the rule now, would you, Mike?
Oh, I'm just questioning, how many circle hooks can I put in a, in a pogue? Can I put three in them?
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no rule about it. But you know what? We can bring that up at this ongoing deliberation among the states. And we can, we can just see if there's any other states have made any determinations on that.
Okay, I think the charter boat should keep their exemptions the way, the way it was last year. Thank you.
Patrick McDonald? Patrick, you have to unmute yourself.
I'm going to have to agree with Mike there. I, I hope and wish that the, the commercial and charter boat fisheries are kind of kept in a different bracket than recreational fishermen. A lot of us know a lot more about what we're doing. I agree with the circle hooks for recreational. But as far as I guess other charter boats and people who know what they're doing, they've been fishing their whole life, we, we have a better mortality rate than somebody who's inexperienced. I just, I agree with Mike. I hope we should, I hope in wish we can keep our exemptions the same as last year. That's all.
Thank you, Patrick. Paul Diggins?
Yeah, also I would like to say is, I think it's about time for the charter boat in the for hire fleet to have their own category and not be lumped in with the recreational people. And also, as far as the circle hook goes, I, I wish there was a way to have the same rule that we had last year. But I don't know, I guess it's too late, but that's what I'll be putting in my comments later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, I'm not seeing any new commenters. There are several people who have previously commented, so I'm going to go to them now. Leah Barden?
Hey, guys. I actually just, I wanted to back up, I believe it was Rob and Mike regarding the for hire and not having to just be lumped into the recreational fishing categories. I also want to point out that I'm 36, I've been fishing for 31 years. I'm pretty experienced. However, I do target striped bass and I chunk out mackerel. So I tend not to use live bait. It's kind of iffy where I am, so I have to freeze it. So those were some things that I want to point out. And I basically fish, fish from shore where it's accessible for my son to be able to get to too. So, but I do agree, not lumping the for hire guys in with us recreational fishermen. Thank you.
Rob, you're up again?
Yeah, thank you very much for having me again. I just wanted to, to touch base with, with what Mike is saying by, by having as many circle hooks as possible. Mike is a top-notch angler and, and knows exactly what he's doing fishing. He knows it's ridiculous to put 10 circle hooks into a live bait. So he knows what he's saying is absolutely the, something that, that us as charter boats are trying to say to you guys, that you're really tying our hands with trying to make customers satisfied because people want to catch fish. Now, it's great to say, okay, I'll be lucky, throw a rod out there, throw a pole out, sit there with my wife and I, we'll have some cheese and wine and hopefully we get hooked up. That's a great use of circle hook. But when you're trying to produce for people and you've got a four-hour trip and you could see by VTRs that a four-hour trip really only equates to like a three-hour trip. So trying to produce a keeper fish and stuff like that at times could be very challenging. Never mind fighting circle hooks. So I just want to say that, that, that I would continue to try to protect us as a business. I'd see if we could figure out some language to help charter boats, guide boats and party boats on this issue. I, I don't think this is necessarily a dead issue. I know, I know we've, we've pushed back on the Atlantic States Marine Fishery Council and we can do emergency actions that, that make things more restrictive, but could also potentially loosen it up. And I, and I see some there. But I wanted to ask the state to please Dan and, and everybody and Mike and I know, I know some of the guys here on board, to keep supporting the charter fleet and the party fleet and the guide fleet that we have here, because it's really, really great in this area. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Rob. Jared?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I did want to clarify my support for the proposal. My support is based on having us being able to use the tube and worm. I agree with the other charter boat folks that it would be great to have the treble hooks allowed as we did last year. I agree that it is very difficult. If you miss hits, you know, people are going to look at you and, you know, wonder why you missed that hit. It will be, you know, comical if we're trying to use circle hooks in that way. And it is a very effective way and safe way for experienced anglers, you know, with, with a treble hook, single treble hook, you know, through the nose is been a tried and true method. And, and really, if you know what you're doing, is a safe method. So I did want to go on record with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. All right, Dan, I'm not seeing any further comments on this item. We can proceed to the final item on this public hearing docket.
Thank you, Jared. So the last one has to do with our blue crab recreational fishery. Actually, I shouldn't say recreational fishery. It's blue crab fishery. But the truth is, we only have a 25 crab daily limit, which makes this a de facto recreational fishery. And so we are proposing something that's kind of unfortunate because we don't want to curtail folks' recreational use of the resources. But we have identified a problem with diamondback terrapins, which is a protected or threatened species under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. And we have discovered that, that in, in some And we have discovered that that in in some instances, the diamondback terrapins are able to get into these blue crab traps, especially when they're not tended frequently and and they drown in the traps. And this creates a problem for the species, and it creates a pretty substantial problem for the agency in terms of how we would deal with this in terms of, you know, permitting and and addressing the the mandates under the States Endangered Species Act. So we are proposing to essentially prohibit the use of 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 trap gear for the taking of blue crabs, but that would not apply to some of the open collapsible traps that are often used by by fishermen, like fishing off of piers and and bulkheads and the like. So, you know, diamondback terrapins are found primarily in our in our warm water estuaries on the the south side of Cape Cod and around Buzzards Bay, Westport River, even as far up as down the island as well. So we did, we did ponder the the potential requirement for a turtle excluded device. But we've instead proposed to go to simply a prohibition on trapping because the turtle excluded device doesn't do a very good job of excluding small individuals. And frankly, with a twenty-five crab limit and and knowing that there's so many other successful methods to take blue crabs, such as dip nets and, you know, chicken dip nets and chicken wings and 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 collapsible traps. We just thought that this is a prudent way to go about this. So Bob Glenn is on the call tonight, and he oversees our blue crab program amongst some of the other prestations. So he can help me with some of the technical information, but why don't we take some clarifying questions, Jared? And if people want to ask about it, then we'll take the comments.
All right, so we're going to use the same process that we use for the other items. Start with questions, go to comments. If you have questions, use the raise hand function, and I will recognize you. Patrick Mc Cat.
Thanks, Jared. What is the, what would be the implementation or rough? Can you give us a rough idea what would be the implementation date of this?
May one.
Okay, I I'm gonna have a comment for you guys to think about when we get the comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I'm not gonna, I'm not seeing any questions, so we'll go to comments. Same thing, raise your hand, we'll recognize you. Barbara Brinzel, you are recognized. Barbara, you have to unmute yourself, you're good.
Thank, thank you, I just did. I'm a board member of the Diamondback Terrapin Working Group, and we applaud this amendment and we support it. I think that if Massachusetts had a strong commercial fishery, we would be advocating for the use of bycatch reduction devices or Teds as we do in other states. But I think that this amendment should prevent the take of terrapins by recreational crabbers and and as long as there are other ways for them to fish for blue crabs, I think this is a an excellent amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Patrick, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to thank the division for recognizing that there's a difference between a place a place set in walkaway trap and that and the collapsible or snatch traps, whatever you want to call them, that that are that are used commonly. That helps a lot. Obviously, this is a no-brainer, in my opinion. I personally support this proposal. However, I would like to point out that the town of Barnstable, the town of Falmouth, and and others, but I know of those two. So the general way that blue crab regulations get communicated to the public is usually through shellfish departments. I know that, like, I'm I'm a Barnstable resident, and I know that when you get the book, you know, the blue cat crab regs are in there. The twenty-twenty-one books are out. There, as people are renewing their licenses now, they're getting the books. They're printed, they're out in the street. The, I believe it's the same for Falmouth. I don't know what their actual release date is, but I'm pretty sure it's ongoing or it's about to be. So I would just, I would hate to see a member of the public who goes by that, like, I also, like, I trap eels on occasion, and I get the regs through that same book. And I just, I just want to make sure that this is going to be that I I want you to have a heads up on that, because there's going to have to be some pretty serious outreach to make sure that that those populations that just, you know, they get the book when a lot of blue crab people are not open in this morning, they're not going to be the types of, a lot of those people are not going to be the types of people that are going to see these kind of things on the internet, etc. So those books and that hand-distributed stuff here in the Cape where there's a pretty prolific, there's a lot of people doing it. You, you, I just hope you're thinking about that.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick. Hey, Jared, could I ask Bob Glenn to weigh in?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick, for your comment. Relative to the outreach, the 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 folks that this new regulation primarily affects would be those people who would historically would purchase a recreational lobster permit, because that is what would be required historically to to fish these types of traps for blue crabs. And so this coming year, as we renew recreational lobster permits, we can certainly provide additional outreach materials with the renewals for recreational permit holders to make them aware that 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 the using, you know, recreational lobster traps or crab pots, any type of six-sided trap would not be allowable any longer. So, you know, we'll make sure that the word gets out. Relative to the other stuff, it it doesn't affect the the yeah, and and Story Reed also indicated to me that we can email all of the the permit holders as well when we let them know. And that these regulations would not affect anybody who's just going out to dip net, which you don't need a permit for currently anyways, so those folks are are, you know, would be.
Thanks, Bob. And and I'd just like to reinforce that, that you don't need a permit to dip net. You don't need a permit to use a star trap or collapsible trap. But you do need a permit to set like a cube or rectangular trap. So that's, that's kind of what Bob's getting at, is that most people don't even get permits to for this activity because they're not using six-sided traps. Okay.
Mike Del Zingo.
I just have a quick question. How many of these permits are there? How many people are actually trapping blue crabs like this?
Story, do you have a number of our recreational lobster and crab permits? So, Mike, by way of background, it's our recreational lobster permit that also covers edible crabs. So any person who holds our recreational lobster permit would be able to trap for blue crabs. Obviously, not all of them do. We don't collect supplemental information on who does and who doesn't.
Okay, and is this also just a, is this like a statewide? These diamondback terrapins statewide, or are they only in certain marshes that they want to eliminate this problem?
So this is Bob Glenn speaking. So the diamondback terrapins are are common kind of in our estuaries and marshes primarily in the Buzzards Bay watershed and also in Antucket Sound watershed. There is also some up in in Wellfleet, and I believe some in in Barnstable Harbor, but they they tend to live in the upper reaches of the estuaries, typically in areas where you would see blue crabs. So this, you know, this does not prevent someone from fishing a lobster trap, say, in in Boston Harbor and where they might catch, you know, lobsters and or, say, Jonah crabs, but it pertains specifically to targeting blue crabs with a six-sided trap.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Rob Savina.
I just real quick, couple of quick questions about this one. So I heard, I just heard the regulation is for a six-sided trap, which I guess is the preferred trap for blue crab. My question is, is are they finding that the blue crab is being overfished? Is is that why we're looking?
No, this has nothing to do with blue crab conservation. This has to do with the inadvertent bycatch of this turtle species that coexists in some of the warm water estuaries where blue crabs also are are present.
Right, so so I see that, I I see what you're, there's no season for the turtles being there. They're there year-round and what have you?
Yeah, they're around residents of Massachusetts, but they're primarily active in the summer, and they they enter into pots in the to eat the the bait that's in there. That's where the problem lies.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Leah Barden.
I'd like to back this proposal. I'm actually, I love turtles, but I want to agree that in hopes that an email actually does go out to those who purchase this permit, because I know as purchasing my fishing license online versus in a store or whatever have you, the information, you can buy the info online, or you can buy a book. But this info really has to get out there somehow, some way. So I do hope that email does go out to those folks that are purchasing this, so they know they can't use this six-sided trap anymore, if if approved. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Leah. Are there any other comments on this? Bob Prescott.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to to comment. I'm a semi-retired biologist that has been studying diamondback terrapin since the late seventies. And also, a long time was until we ran out of crabs in in our part of the Cape, a longtime recreational blue crab fisherman. The, we did a lot of research in Pleasant Bay, the Chatham Orleans estuary system. And in the late nineties, when we were doing some monitoring on terrapin populations, we pulled up a crab trap in the upper reaches of Pleasant Bay and found four dead terrapins in that in that trap. That person did not have a commercial license, didn't have a permit for traps. He just simply didn't want to have to catch his crab, stand there and catch crabs. Instead, he put the trap out. Once he realized that it was a death trap for turtles, he didn't put it out anymore. But I'm a little concerned that there are a number of people where we are that simply buy a trap and put it out on their own from their dock or from their mooring or, you know, somewhere in the water, and it it's not buoyed. It isn't, in some cases, it's it's just simply tied to their dock or tied to their boat. I'm wondering, is there some way that if we find out or we 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 think that somebody has put out a trap, is there some what's the recourse? Is it through the environmental police and or our local shellfish warden? What's the best way to handle that? And I also just want to thank all of you at the Division Marine Fisheries really for for taking the lead on this and realizing there was a problem where it is only a recreational fisher fisheries, and these six-sided traps aren't aren't really essential to that, but I just want to commend you for for taking this step and and being proactive and protecting this rare species.
Bob, I I can answer that. This is Dan. I would suggest the environmental police would be the, you know, the most logical if you're looking for some enforcement follow-up, but it may be just the local shellfish constable, and and I think you make a good point about the need to educate the shellfish constables, because they're like the first line of 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 defense for all of the, so many of the the shellfishing kind of activities, and and this is this is that kind of thing. I mean, it's we already have evidence that that some people put these traps out without even buying the permit. I'm not even sure they know they need a permit. So the education part can't be just us communicating to our permit holders. It has to go beyond that. And so I think the key is, and we have close working relationships with the shellfish constables throughout the state, is to ask them for assistance in keeping an eye on the water and and, you know, keeping people informed about this rule. You know, it's probably be a hundred-dollar fine, you know, a civil civil penalty if someone was violating this particular regulation. And but if there's, and if there's no permit, you can't, you can't suspend or revoke a permit. And so, but yeah, I think it's an education challenge for us, and I take your point.
All right, Dan, I'm not seeing any further comments on this. I just wanted to circle back. Do we have about four thousand recreational lobster permit holders who fish traps?
Yeah, yeah, but that that ranges from from Hampton, New Ham, I'm sorry, from Salisbury all the way to to Westport, and and most of the those turtles are are to the, in our southern waters.
Yeah, it's likely a nominal amount of those permit holders who are fishing traps for blue crabs.
Right. Yep, okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's public hearing. You have until Friday if you want to send us a a written letter, and as we mentioned before, our commission is going to be on the eighteenth, right, Jared?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for attending, and and we appreciate the the great, great feedback tonight.